Welcome to the August 12, 2024, regular meeting of Plymouth Township Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And welcome, everybody. This is our first regular meeting in the Township Building. And this is where we will be meeting going forward. Is there any public comment on the agenda? And I just, when we get to public comment at the end, if you'll just come up to this table where you see the microphone, and there's a little button that says push. If you push that, you'll be able to speak and be heard. All right, first order of business. An announcement that we held, Council held an executive session following the workshop meeting on August 5, 2024. Next, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the workshop meeting held July 1 and the regular meeting held on July 8? Moved. Motion by Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney, we will take a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson? Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Is there a motion to approve the departmental reports and bills?
No move.
By Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Couple of announcements about future meetings. The September Council Workshop will be held on Tuesday, September 3, and not on a Monday as usual, and that is because of the Labor Day holiday falling on Monday. We have, oops, a schedule of our upcoming 2025 budget meetings. Those meetings will be held here in the Township Building. Monday, October 21, at 6:00 p.m. Monday, October 28, at 6:00 p.m. And Monday, November 18, 2024. All Council meetings are going to be scheduled, all October Council meetings will be scheduled on the 7th and the 15th. November Council meetings are scheduled for the 6th, which is a Wednesday, and the 11th. And General Election Day is Tuesday, November the 5th. And all meetings will be held here in the Township Building. Next, we have an announcement by Ms. Leonard.
We'll be having a town hall regarding sidewalks and the plan of where to put them, or where they are and aren't required. On Wednesday, September 18, at 2024, at 7:00 p.m. here at the Township Building Auditorium.
Leonard. Next, by our Township Solicitor, an indemnity agreement with Whitpain Township. Mr. Glassman?
Yes, for Council's consideration, we have an indemnification agreement between Whitpain Township, Plymouth Township, and the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission related to work to be completed by Whitpain Township on a project located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Union Meeting Road and Township Line Road. The purpose of the project is for repairing and/or replacing the existing pedestrian access facilities, including traffic signal equipment, sidewalk equipment, and associated curb ramps. And this is a Whitpain project, but some of the property is within Plymouth Township. If the Commission, and the purpose of the agreement is that if the Commission seeks indemnification against Plymouth Township, then because this is a Whitpain Township project, Whitpain Township will step in and defend Plymouth Township. All other issues with the contract are in order, and I would recommend that Council approves this agreement.
No move. Sorry, I've been speaking without the microphone. I have to get used to turning it on and off, but I think you all heard me anyway. All right, we have a motion by Ms. Visio to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. We will take a roll call vote, since we had no questions or comments. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Also from our Solicitor, we have a stipulation to settle. Mr. Glassman, please.
We have a stipulation to settle a tax assessment appeal for a property owned by 1402 Ridge Pike Associates LLC. Whereas the school district filed an appeal to the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals, seeking an increase to the assessment of the subject property, which is parcel number 49-00-10138-001 for the 2023 and all future tax years. Whereas after negotiation, the property and the school district have agreed effective January 1, 2023, for county and township tax purposes, that the assessment on the property shall be increased from $2,273,700 to $2,400,000. And effective January 1, 2024, for county and township tax purposes, the assessment of the property shall be increased from $2,273,700 to $2,400,000. As a result of the increase in assessment on the subject property, there's been an underpayment in taxes to Plymouth Township for tax years 2023 and 2024 in the amount of $683.54. And the school district and the property owner have already executed the stipulation.
Is there a motion to approve the stipulation to settle?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments from Council? Questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Next, on the agenda, for first consideration is single-use plastic reduction ordinance. Mr. Glassman?
Yes. Yes, and I'm just going to summarize some of the highlights of the ordinance, and this is just first consideration. So this has not been advertised yet, but will be advertised if Council wants us to continue a second consideration at the next month. So under this ordinance, the purpose of this chapter is to reduce the use of single-use plastics by commercial establishments within the Township, promote the use of reusable bags by customers at commercial establishments, curb litter on the streets, in the parks, and in the trees, protect the local streams, rivers, waterways, and other aquatic environment, protect the sewer system, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, reduce solid waste generation, promote the use of reusable, compostable, and recyclable materials within the Township, preserve the natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the Township. We leave the pressures on recyclers, who cite single-use plastics as a major source of contamination and inefficiency within the recycling stream, and reduce incineration of plastic from the disposal of single-use plastics. This ordinance lays out definitions for commercial establishment, customer, cardboard box, distribution or distributie, exempt bag, non-recyclable paper bag, recyclable paper bag, reusable bag, single-use plastic carryout bag in the Township. And I'm going to highlight a few different sections under 17-3, "Single-Use Plastic Bag." Beginning six months after the effective date, the commercial establishments shall not distribute single-use plastic carryout bags to any customer either at the commercial establishment, off-site, or in conjunction with the delivery. 17-4 deals with non-recyclable paper bag. And beginning six months after the effective date, retail establishments shall not distribute a non-recyclable paper bag to any customer either at the commercial establishment, off-site, or in conjunction with the delivery. A commercial establishment may distribute to customers recyclable paper bags at the point of sale if such bags are distributed to the customer for a charge of not less than 10 cents per bag. There's a section on reusable bags, which also has the same 10 cent per bag fee. There's a section on cardboard boxes, and then a section on signage requirements. There's a section on plastic straws, which, beginning 120 days after the effective date, retail establishments shall not distribute single-use plastic straws, except upon request of the customer. Section on single-use plastic utensils, beginning 120 days after the effective date, retail establishments shall not distribute single-use plastic utensils, except upon request of the customer. And then we have sections on enforcement and exemptions, which can be considered by Council upon written request.
Thank you, Mr. Glassman. This is only first consideration, so we are not taking a vote tonight. This will be advertised. We did make a few minor changes in response to some comments and questions from residents. One of those on the cardboard box. If any of you all shop at BJ's, you know that you can, they reuse their cardboard boxes, that their items come in, like their paper towels and canned goods. And this ordinance allows them to continue that practice of letting customers take those, reuse those cardboard boxes. Are there any, I know some people may have come just for the plastic bag ordinance, so are there any questions or comments about our first consideration of the single-use plastic bag ordinance? Next, we have an announcement by Mr. Nelson.
Due to, I believe, the fact that the October 14th is Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day, the regular council meeting will be changing from the 14th to Tuesday, October 15.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Nelson. And also, we are accommodating our police force, who are having an event on that Monday. And to accommodate our police officers, we have changed that meeting date to Tuesday, October 15. Next, under Police and Public Safety. Chief, do you have anything for tonight? Okay, thank you, Chief. And with that, we will have Mr. Nelson detail for us the towing contract award, which has been recommended by our Chief of Police. Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, just to continue what the Chief was saying, I have an email here from the Chief that says that on Monday, July 15, submissions for the police towing contract were opened. And one proposal was submitted for consideration by EBB Towing. As such, the Police Department reviewed all required paperwork and inspected the premises at 601 South Graber's Road, to include contractor information, storage area specifications, equipment, insurance, prerequisites, and compliance to terms with contract/scheduled fees. EBB Towing has satisfied all the conditions specified by Plymouth Township. And as Chief Commissioner mentioned, he recommends that Council award EBB Towing's 2024 contract as its sole responsibility. Therefore, I move to accept EBB Towing's proposal for the police towing contract.
We have a motion by Mr. Nelson, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments from Council? Any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. All right, next, under our Public Safety, by Mr. Whitney, regarding Harmonville Fire Company Resolution.
Right, a resolution of the Council of Plymouth Township of Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, to recognize the Harmonville Fire Company Number One Station rebuild is funded by Plymouth Township in conjunction with the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grant funding. Whereas the Harmonville Fire Company Number One was awarded a grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of Budget of Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, RACP, funding. Such funding supports the demolition of the existing Station Two and construction of a new firehouse with the ability to drive through the building. And whereas the Governor's Office of the Budget authorized a release of $1,975,000 for this RACP project under the Capital Budget Project Itemization Act 3258-00. And whereas the current total project cost of the fire station rebuild is $3,975,000, using $1,975,000 of the RACP grant and $2 million of local match support. Now be it resolved that the Plymouth Township Council approves the availability of $2 million held in the Wells Fargo Bank account number ending in 7040 to serve as local matching fund support for the RACP project. And witness whereof, the Plymouth Township Council adopted this resolution in lawful session this 12th day of August, 2024. Plymouth Township Council, Karen R. Bramblett, Chair. I would make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. We have a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any questions or comments from Council? Any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Under Engineering, do we have anything tonight, Mr.?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving down, under Subdivision and Land Development. We have an action item by our Solicitor. Mr. Glassman, thank you.
Yes, I have a land development resolution for you. Be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council does hereby approve the preliminary/final land development plan titled "Conditional Use/Land Development Plans Prepared for Plymouth Meeting KPG III LLC", hearing called Owner/Developer, prepared by Bowler Engineering, dated March 9, 2023, last revised June 28, 2024, consisting of sheet numbers 1 through 14, the plans, proposing to modify an existing office building into residential space on the property with the address of 502 West Germantown Pike. Land Development Application Number 23-1, in accordance with said plans, under and subject to the following conditions. One, that the owner/developer shall execute a public improvement agreement and memorandum of public improvement agreement as required by the subdivision and land development ordinance, and pay all applicable fees and assessments, including but not limited to the following. A, sewer connection fee in accordance with the Township's connection fee and EDU schedule in effect at the time of application for connection and payment. It's also noted that the owner/developer in Township will be entering into a sewer improvement and recapture agreement that will address the Township's portion of the sewer connection fee. B, recreation fee in the amount of $149,000, based on 149 D. Dwelling units. Two, that the owner/developer shall prepare revised plans to comply with the requirements/comments set forth in the August 7, 2024 Report of Carroll Engineering Corporation, the Township Traffic Engineer, attached to this resolution to the satisfaction approval of the said traffic engineer. Three, that the owner/developer shall prepare revised plans to comply with the requirements/comments set forth in the August 7, 2024 Report of Carroll Engineering Corporation, the Township Sanitary Sewer Engineer, attached to this resolution to the satisfaction approval of the said sanitary sewer engineer. Four, that the owner/developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements/comments set forth in the July 10, 2024 Report of Woodrow &amp; Associates, the Township Engineer, attached to this resolution, except to the extent that waivers are granted here into the satisfaction and approval of said Township Engineer, if any waivers are granted. Five, that the owner/developer shall obtain all required permits and approvals from the Sewer Authority, DEP Sewage Facility Planning Module waiver, the Water Company with jurisdiction over the property and any road permits, including highway occupancy permit from Plymouth Township and a highway occupancy permit from Montgomery County, if any is needed. Six, that the owner/developer appeared before the Plymouth Township Planning Agency at their July 2, 2024 regular meeting, which recommended denial of this application for reasons outside of the owner/developer's control to address. Seven, that the owner/developer has reviewed this application with the Montgomery County Planning Commission, who by report dated July 17, 2023, had three remaining comments to this application. The owner/developer is not required to address comments 1 and 2, as they are outside of the owner/developer's control to address, and owner/developer has addressed comment 3 in the last planned submission. Eight, that the owner/developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements/comments set forth in the July 31, 2024 Report of Joel Rowe, zoning officer, attached to this resolution to the satisfaction approval of the said zoning officer. Nine, that the owner/developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements/comments set forth in the March 16, 2023 Report of Suburban Lighting Consultant and Mulhern Consulting Engineers, the Township Lighting Consultants, to the satisfaction approval of these said consultants. Ten, that the owner/developer shall prepare revisions to the plan to list all waivers granted and notes required by this resolution, if needed. Eleven, prior to the issuance of any permits, all outstanding legal, engineering, and administrative fees applicable to this land development must be paid by owner/developer. And twelve, this approval is subject to the fulfillment of all ongoing, sorry, of all foregoing conditions in their entirety, and no permit shall be issued, nor shall any development take place on the property unless and until all such conditions are fulfilled. Duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the 12th day of August, 2024.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion by Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any comments or questions from Council? All right, and this involves the redevelopment of the Keystone Building at the Plymouth Meeting Mall, the tall, white, vacant office building into one- and two-bedroom apartments. Any comments or questions from the audience? Yes, if you have any, please come up to this table, Marlene. State your name and whether you live in Plymouth. And see the little, see the little button that says push? Push it and it will turn.
It's already on.
Ah, great.
Hi, my name's Marlene Chaken. I live at Plymouth Hall Condos in Plymouth Township, Plymouth Meeting. And I, the only question I really have is, it was originally proposed as 149 units. Is it still at that number?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chaken. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we will take a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Next order of business is an escrow release to be read by Mr. Nelson.
Yes, I have a letter here from Mr. Lonnie Manai that states, or that is regarding to 1234 Butler Pike. It states that based on field observations of work completed to date, they find that sufficient work has been completed to release the amount of $46,208.25. By releasing this amount, the total account balance will be zero. Also, as requested, they have calculated the public improvement cost for maintenance, for the maintenance guarantee. The total maintenance guarantee of 15% would be $1,245. I move to approve the escrow release and for the creation of the bond for the maintenance guarantee.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any comments or questions from Council? Any comments or questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and speak into that microphone. Now give us your name and whether you live in Plymouth.
My name's Natalie Burkowski. I live in White Marsh Township, right across the street from this property. My husband and I own Burkowski Homes, who also owns Butler Pike Apartments. So we're the owner of what you're releasing the escrow on. And I know typically, we don't need to come to these meetings, really, because I know that, I saw the email from Lonnie, that he was, gave us the go-ahead to get the money released. But our, but we bought it from Tularium. He was another developer that was having hard times, and he needed to sell the property, and he approached us. So it was a little bit of a tricky, like, buy-out type of a deal. But we just wanted, my husband and I felt one of us needed to come just to say how wonderful of a situation we dealt with, with Plymouth. Everybody was really great to work with, from Jim Wallace to Joel Rowe. Lonnie, I've never met you, but you're, I, you know, saw your emails and everything. But it was just a very seamless process, and that, with being builders for over 30 years, that doesn't always happen. So my husband and I just wanted one of us to come and represent our business, just to say thank you, and Plymouth Township did a great job with our, our project.
We really appreciate that, and we love our White Marsh neighbors.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I guess I just have one question. How, if the, with the money, if you approved to get the money released, how does it work with getting a check? Like, do I, does it get mailed out? Do I pick it up? Just because I'm just, with our businesses, we're experiencing the snail mail. I mean, sometimes I'll get a check like 30 days later, when I know, I know somebody sent it out to me. So I didn't know if there was a chance that I could, when it is ready, come and pick it up, instead of putting a stamp on it and waiting.
Yes, that's possible.
Okay, I just wasn't sure.
We have your contacts.
Okay. Thank you again.
Yeah, that's our Township manager, so. All right, thank you very much. All right, and no other further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Good night. All right, next, we have our reading of our upcoming zoning hearings by Mr. Whitney.
The zoning hearing board of Plymouth Township will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 19, 2024, commencing at 7:00 p.m. in the Plymouth Township Building, 700 Belvar Road, Plymouth Meeting, PA, 19462. The following applications will be heard. Michael Ross and Gina Ross on an application for variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 342, as amended Article 19, Section 1909. The variance requested is as follows. Install a 54-inch high fence in rear yard with street frontage. The property is located at 152 Alexander Drive in a B residential zoning district. George Curick on an application for variances from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 34, as amended Article 6, Section 602.B. The variances requested are as follows. One, construct, construct a new home to same line on side toward Brighton Road as line from prior property. Two, construct new home five foot forward on front of property toward Church Road. There shall be a front yard on each lot, not less than 35 feet. The property is located at 23 Church Road in a B residential zoning district. Dimitri Amalios on an application for variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 342, as amended Article 19, Section 1909.E. The variance requested is as follows. Would like to build a six-foot tall fence 10 feet from the property line along Walton Road, where 35 feet is required. The fence will start in rear half of house and will match the neighbor's fence at 602 Treaty Road. The property is located at 600 Treaty Road in an A residential zoning district. Any citizen of Plymouth Township or interested party may attend the public hearing and have an opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Under Poxham Recreation, our upcoming events by Ms. Leonard.
The Greater Plymouth Community Center Shutdown Week will be August 26 to August 30. New fitness classes begin after Labor Day. A Halloween bingo will happen on Friday, October 4. Harriet Weatherhill Park Campfire and Hay Ride will be on Saturday, October 5. Pool O'Ween will be on Friday, October 25. Veterans Day Celebration will be Wednesday, November 6. Our Outdoor Vendor Market will happen Saturday, November 16. The Holiday Tree Lighting Ceremony will be Wednesday, December 4. Breakfast with Santa is Saturday, December 14. And full sponsors are wanted. Details, more details are available in our brochure, the app, website, social media, or by calling 610-277-4312.
Ms. Leonard? Under Miscellaneous Business, Announcement of Citizen Board Vacancies. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, so the following Citizen Board positions are currently open. There are three positions open on the Property Maintenance Code of Appeals Board, and there is one position open on the Historical Architectural Review Board, and there's one position open on the Human Relations Commission. So if you or anyone you know might want to serve on these Citizen Boards, So if you or anyone you know might want to serve on these citizen boards, they are asked to submit their resume or a letter stating their interest to the Township Manager at 700 Belvar Road, Plymouth Meeting, PA, 19462, or email Karen Weiss at kweiss@plimmethtownship.org.
Thank you. And next, a resolution to fill the vacancy on our zoning hearing board, Mr. Nelson?
Resolution states that whereas Plymouth Township has established a zoning hearing board pursuant to the municipality's planning code 53 PS 10901, and whereas the municipality's planning code at Section 903A requires the township appoint members to the board by resolution, and whereas the township desires to appoint Abigail Leeds to the board, now therefore be it resolved that as of this 12th day of August 2024, Abigail Leeds is appointed as a member of the Plymouth Township zoning hearing board, with a term that shall expire on December 31, 2026, duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the 12th day of August 2024. I move to adopt this resolution, appointing Ms. Abigail Leeds to our Township zoning hearing board.
Second?
Second by Ms. Leonard.
Oops, second by Ms. Leonard. I'm going to have to get used to turning a microphone on and off. I promise I'll be better next meeting. Okay, any comments or questions from council on this resolution? Any comments or questions from the audience? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, we have now come to the audience participation part of our meeting. Any members of the audience have any comments, questions, or concerns they'd like to address? Please come up and speak into the microphone, just give us your name and whether you live in Plymouth.
Thank you, Andrew Katronik, live in Plymouth Meeting. I'm part of, Chair of the EAB Board. Back in the single-use plastic reduction ordinance discussion, there was no vote taken to advertise? Is that part of the protocol? I might understand it will be advertised or not.
So it will be advertised. Council did a first reading this evening, as we were still going through and making some tweaks over the last few weeks, and it will be advertised and proposed action at the September meeting.
Because we made some changes, like with the cardboard boxes, we had to go back over, start the process. All right, any other questions or comments from members of the audience? All right, thank you all for attending, here in our township building. See you next month, meeting adjourned.